I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Flugerville City Council at 7:01. We're going to do the pledge and stand for a moment of silence if you'll please join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Our next item is public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes, and I have one individual. Cheryl Tripp.
Hi, this is my third occasion coming here to talk to you guys about Schultz Lane. I went to an open house last week that the city offered to provide feedback. The city's plan along with IDI was going to volunteer to do a center turn lane on Schultz Lane, the length of their property, but on both ends of their property remains the two lane. The CIP has a four lane project waiting for $3,088,000. There's no funding. I don't know where the funding is going to come from. However, nothing on that Schultz project addresses the dangerous intersection at A W Grimes in Schultz Lane. So I keep addressing this over and over again. And last week at the open house, I was addressing it. And I'm very passionate about this. So as I'm addressing that the only thing that it benefits is the developer and not the residents because Schultz Lane is the only public road to our street. The police were called to the library. And my, the response from the city for that happening was our staff witnessed raised voices and thought they saw another staff member get pushed and called the police in an effort to deescalate the situation. We have discussed the situation with our team and outlined other ways of how to address situations to ensure there is not a misunderstanding. There was no misunderstanding. The individual that claimed that I pushed them, I asked that individual, did I push you? She responded with, I do not recall. I'm sorry, but if somebody pushes you, you're going to recall. So today I went and I requested a copy of the police report. It's going to take one to 10 business days to receive it. However, because I didn't have an incident number, I doubt that I'm going to be able to receive it. And if I can't receive a police report to find out what exactly was transpired, then I don't know if the city officials that are working over there that called the police on me are just trying to shut me down. So during that open house, I had learned that people that are making the decisions for residents in this city do not even live in this city. Four out of the five people that I spoke to yesterday do not live in this city. They come here, they have their lucrative salaries, and then they go back to their communities and spend their money in their communities, not in Flugerville. The average salary in Flugerville is $67,000. Our city manager makes $276,000 a year. Our top three, top three positions in the city of Flugerville residents are paying over $750,000. That's ridiculous that we cannot get the city to pay attention to a dangerous intersection and fix the intersection before they bring in more businesses. Ten businesses are coming in there. My recommendation, we do not do any road construction on Schultz Lane until both cities can get together and decide with the developer of how they're going to fix the mile long road with that dangerous intersection. The proposal that is in right now is a proposal that is, I hope, temporary, but that proposal was never even mentioned that it was submitted. We were just given options, but those options have already been made, just like the, the construction is getting ready to start in a month. But we're going to go from a four lane down to a two lane with a center turn lane. That's it. That doesn't fix the construct, the congestion on Schultz Lane. It doesn't fix the dangerous intersection. So I'm asking you to please stop the construction on Schultz Lane until the intersection can be incorporated into that CIP.
Thank you, Ms. Tripp.
Thank you.
Our next agenda, well, let me ask, is there anybody else wishing to make public comment before I move on? Nope, okay. Item four is proclamations, and I have four at least. The first proclamation I have is regarding Quality Awareness Week in the city of Flugerville, May 1st through May 5th. Air quality can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents of the city of Flugerville, children, older adults, people with lung disease, and people with heart disease, which make up about half of all residents in central Texas. They are particularly affected by poor air quality. The city of Flugerville supports the efforts of the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and U S Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality. The U S Environmental Protection Agency has designated May 1st through the 5th, 2024 as National Air Quality Awareness Week. I encourage our residents and employees to be air aware and educate themselves about local air quality by visiting Kepco's Air Central Texas website at aircentraltexas.org and promoting air quality and air quality awareness within our city. This evening, we have environmental specialists Bill Dias and Chase Williams that are here to accept the proclamation. Our next proclamation is relating to Economic Development Week in the city of Flugerville, May 6th through the 10th. International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers. The city of Flugerville economic develop, developers, developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. The city of Flugerville further commends the Flugerville Community Development Corporation for their hard work and dedication in promoting economic development projects and sustaining economic development activities in the city. And Amy Madison is here to accept that proclamation.
All board members.
Come on.
Current is fine.
Yeah, you want to stand over here? Yeah, yeah. All right, the next proclamation is declaring Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville, May 2024. Motorcycling is both a popular form of transportation and recreation, and today's society finds more citizens motorcycling on the beautiful roads of Texas. Motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than any other vehicle drivers. It is a responsibility of all of us to put them, uh, make that a safety situation for them. I urge all members of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and to do everything that we can to ensure the safety of motorcyclists and other users of our roadway. So I proclaim May the 24th as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville. And this evening, we have a Flugerville Club, Texas Council, Texas Council Clubs and Independent Region One, and Wolverines MC are here to accept the proclamation.
Yeah, make sure that picture, that picture's in there.
On behalf of the Wolverine MCs, we would like to thank you just for listening to what we have to say here. We'd like to just name a few points here that motorcycles, when they're coming into a light, they downshift like standard cars, so you might not see our brake lights coming on. We all often ride in groups for our safety, so please don't split the group. Turn your head, please, when you're driving. Since I've been riding a motorcycle, and when I'm in my cage, we call a car a cage. I do it now. Please just turn your head and look for us. God bless.
Here's a pastor.
So my last, is this the last one? Last proclamation is declaring April 27th, 2024 as Cardiac Arrest Survivors' Day in the city of Flugerville. And that coincides with the ESD II's celebration and event where the gentleman who would have been here is not here, but will be at that ceremony. But it's, it's very important. Emergency Medical Services are by a public service. The members of Emergency Medical Services teams and first responders include police, fire, and are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care early by standard, by CPR and defibrillation can dramatically improve the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden cardiac arrest. The members of the public, such as Matt Nader, who suffered a sudden cardiac arrest as a teenager at a Westlake football game and was saved by his parents performing CPR and using AED. On the 9th of December, 2023, Matt Nader found himself in a similar situation at a Westlake football game and responded to a person suffering cardiac arrest and provided early bystander CPR until first responder crews arrived. And the patient was resurrected and lived thanks to Matt's incredible life-saving actions. And that would have been here tonight, but he wasn't. That's fine. He will be at the event Saturday. So if you're able to come by there, please do. Thank you very much.
Mayor, yes, I am a cardiac arrest survivor.
Are you? Oh, my goodness.
I have a, what's called an ICD, an implanted cardio defibrillator that actually went off at a time and stopped my heart, which restarts automatically because it's supposed to, and my device saved my life.
Wonderful. Glad to have you here, sir. Now we come to reading of the consent agenda. Tristan, now, anybody wishing to?
I'd like to pull item 5A.
5A?
For me, 5 foxtrot.
No other items should be pulled.
No other concerns.
All right, Tristan.
Thank you. Items 5A and 5F have been pulled from the consent agenda. Item 5B is approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading, "In ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 157 Unified Development Code, dotted by ordinance number 1073-11-304-12 of the city of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by repealing and replacing subchapter 4.4 Corridor Districts CL 3, CL 4, CL 5, amending subchapter 9 Architectural Site Design and Layout Provisions, creating 9.10 Corridor District Design Standards, amending subchapter 11 Landscaping and Screening Standards, and amending subchapter 20 Definitions as shown in Exhibits A, B, C, and D to be known as the Corridor District Text Amendments, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date." 5C is approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading, "In ordinance of the city of Flugerville, re-adopting Code of Ordnances Title 9 General Regulations, Chapter 95 Parks and Recreation, Subchapter 95.50 Youth Programs Standards of Care, replacing all ordinances in conflict containing a savings clause and declaring an effective date." As a reminder, items 5A and 5F have been removed. All items remaining may be act upon in a single motion. This will also be by voice vote, not electronic voting.
Okay. Just one second. All right, motion and a second, Mayor Pro Tim Weiss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holliday. Councilwoman Ruiz. Councilwoman McDonald.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mateer. Councilwoman Rogers.
Yes.
And Mayor votes yes. Motion carried. Awesome. Okay, moving on to our regular agenda. 6A is discussing, consider action to approve the appointment of Daniela Soria as court administrator. Hope I pronounced it correctly as close as I could.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege to get to introduce you tonight to our court administrator candidate, Daniela Soria. She goes by Dani.
Soria, okay.
Yes. Dani has worked over 20 years in municipal courts across three different courts. She has her Level 3 certification from the TMCEC, and our staff recommendation is to add her to our city team, and she's here tonight to say hello to you.
Hi, good evening all, Mayor, the council members, and city manager, and everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to answer any questions. I'm excited and eager to join the Flugerville team, and I can't wait to hit the ground running.
Okay, great.
I understand.
I'm sorry?
Where did you go to high school?
I am from the Dallas-Fort Worth area.
Oh, I know. So where did you go to?
Polytechnic High School.
I was thoroughly impressed. I saw where, I, I went to school at Owen Catholic.
Oh, okay.
I, I saw Everman, I saw, or, I mean, you, your progression is very impressive.
Yes, I grew up, I grew up in poly.
There we go. Is that a hood?
That is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Did he say that, or did you say good or the hood?
It is. Yes, it is.
All right, any other questions?
And, and I imagine you'll be moving on down here.
Yes.
Are you excited about the opportunity to live in the community?
Yep, very excited. I first visited, well, I passed by here a lot to go visit my family in Mexico. So came to actually look around the town and the city and see prior to, to applying. Once I noticed, I loved it, and we've been over here since I applied, maybe about five times. Yeah, so I'm very eager to, to come down. Thank you so much.
We don't have to vote on this, I guess. We do?
Yeah, do we?
Yes.
Oscar, is that okay?
Motion and a second.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Daniela, Daniela?
Soria.
Soria, I'll get it right.
Dani, yes.
All right. Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Mateer. Councilwoman Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Weiss.
Yes.
And Mayor votes yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Flugerville.
Thank you for joining us.
Our next item is 6B Presentation Regarding the Flugerville Community Development Corporation, FY 24 Q2 Financial Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have the pleasure again tonight to make, to present a financial update for PCDC. My name is Salom Tzoka. I'm your financial analyst for the PCDC. Mayor, I know you have, you don't have too much time tonight, so I'll be very quick to make this presentation. PCDC, as you know, is a 4B corporation, and so sales tax is our main source of revenue. So tonight, Mayor, I'll have this slide just to talk about sales tax. We are presenting sales tax for the last six months, from October 2023 to March. As represented by the yellow line on the bottom left is our actual sales tax for each month. As you can see, Mayor, we are comparing the actual sales tax with what we have received in the same month for the past three years, but I'll just focus on the 2024 and 2023, the yellow and the green. Each month, we have seen our sales tax either being below or equal to what we received in the same month of 2023. However, except for the month of November, where it was above, and the month of March, but for the rest, we have either trended along or slightly below. And the next bottom left, right, rather, is evidence of the same picture, where 2024 pretty much is following along 2023 by the yellow line.
So if I may ask, on the monthly sales tax revenue in January, isn't that typical? So if I may ask, on the monthly sales tax revenue in January, isn't that typical because you get a delayed report from the Comptroller's Office?
Hundred percent. With the exception for Feb and March, the sales tax on presented to you is our estimate.
Okay.
Because we are usually two months behind. So the top graph just shows the same scenario. I'll give you the example of March. Nine point two million represents the twelve-month trading, meaning whatever we have received in the month of March plus the eleven months before it. If you add all those sales tax, you get nine point two million. And we are comparing that with what would have received last year in the same month, March two thousand and twenty-three, and the twelve months before it. So ideally, we're just trying to show here that inasmuch as the sales tax has been slightly lower, but we are still trending above cumulative twelve-month trading for two thousand and twenty-three, if that makes sense.
Could you could you remind me, what did we budget for sales tax growth this year?
And that takes us to the next slide. Sales tax for two thousand and twenty. This year is nine point five million. So far, we have for the six months, the actual is four point four million, which is forty-six percent. Would have loved to hit fifty percent, but it's forty-six percent. Keeping in mind what Mayor has commented, that the month of February and March are estimated numbers since we are two months behind.
What what did we estimate, or what did we budget for sales tax last year?
Around ten point. We didn't hit the budget last year.
I guess what was the actual last year?
Can look for that number. Actually, for the whole year or for the same year?
Yeah, for the whole year.
For the for the whole year. I can give you the number quickly. I don't have.
I'm just curious if it seems like we are trending along the exact same trajectory as last year, which means if we budgeted for an increase, we we may be disappointed. If we budgeted the same number, then then we're right on track, right? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
We budgeted for an increase, and we're disappointed.
No, last year's budget for sales tax was ten million.
Right, but what was last year's actual?
Nine point something million. We're slightly below it. So I would like to think this month, this year, we're going to hit our target because it's lower than what we projected last year.
Okay. Thank you.
So on this present slide, Mayor, it's just a matter of comparing the actuals against the budget. I will not go into the weeds. As you can see, the percentage there is the representation of the percentage of the cumulative total in the middle column here today versus the budget. But a big takeaway here, Mayor, will be the four million net income as for the past six months. We have come to four million because we have received four million sales tax, which, as we mentioned, is the main source of revenue. We have also earned some revenue, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, from our interest with the investments that we have in the various portfolios. But interestingly, it's what here we are saying it's gain, but it's literally just proceeds from this land service. I think we have had this presented before. If you add those three revenues, it's giving us about seven million, and the total expenditure for the period six months, three point eight, we have four million net income. With that, it takes us to the next slide, which the four million drops into our reserves and our savings. It could have been used to go into our textbook or any of this portfolio of the investments that we have. So as we sit sitting right now, our fund balance is twenty-nine, twenty-one million, which includes the four million net and whatever we have had from the previous month. That's the financial position that we have. Suffice to mention, we have had some interesting feedback when we sent where the council needed to know also how we are looking in terms of our commitments and our liabilities for the future. And I had an opportunity to share, I don't know if you all saw it, the P C D C's investment incentive and obligations report, which shows that in the long term, P C D C has an obligation, a loan of a total of eighty-nine million over the period from two thousand and twenty-four to the next fifty years or so. The longest being the liability on our downtown East project, the fifty million, as you know. And another long long-term obligation is the loan, the Whitney loan, which is trending up to twenty thirty-one, and a total of twenty-three million outstanding. So fifty million, twenty-three million, and some of the commitments, incentives and the like, and the the rental. So we have liabilities that are not here, that are not shown here, but they are long-term. But over the fund balance as we speak today is twenty-one million.
I appreciate that, Salom. Thank you for for bringing that up. I did ask that question in the the pre-work. And one of the, I guess, the purpose of of my question, I do see, you know, we're we're sitting on a decent amount of fund balance of of reserves. And I want to make sure we're doing that purposefully. And if there are liabilities or obligations that are costing us more in interest than we are earning, then potentially deploying some of our existing capital to offset those other liabilities, just to make sure that we're achieving the most optimal return on our our investments.
No, thank you. And I think that was a very interesting question because we had to go through it as management, and we saw that, yes, our liquidity looks healthy in the long term. Inasmuch as eighty million looks a big number, but if stretched over the next few years, we are still pretty much looking at seven million, nine million, depending on which month or which year you are on. But yes, we are still sustainable for.
Good.
Excellent. Good work. Good presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to seven A. Is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading an ordinance leaving special assessment for and apportioning the cost of certain improvements for property in and for the Lakeside Meadows Public Improvement District, Improvement Area number one and Improvement Area number two, fixing a charge and lien against all properties within the Improvement Area number one and Improvement Area number two in the district, and the owners thereof, providing for the manner and method of collection of such assessments, providing for penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, making a finding of special benefit for property in the district, and the real and true owners thereof approving a service and assessment plan, approving a Lakeside Meadows Public Improvement District financing agreement, providing severability clause, and providing an effective date.
It's not opaque.
Whoa.
Mayor and Council, tonight, this is an item that will be presented to you through our through our advisor, the PIT advisor, John Snyder with P three Works will be here to be able to answer any questions you might have as regarding that Lakeside Meadows development.
Mayor, Council, John Snyder with P three Works. I'm happy to answer any questions. I did put together a few slides that were really just to assist in answering questions, but if you want me to walk through them, I'm happy to do that as well.
If you would.
Sure. See if I can figure out. Button is missing. That makes sense. All right. Okay, so here's a general map of the district. You can see on the on the south side, there's already industrial buildings in place. And I actually have a better map in here that that does show the various uses. So it's everything from industrial to office, retail, as well as single-family up on the on the north side. It's that yellow parcel, I guess, above the the big red center block is is sold to the state of Texas, and so that will be a a state office building.
Industrial flex, please. Can you put back?
Yeah, go back. Yeah, number nine. Can you elaborate on what that is?
Yeah, and I've got the developer here as well if they want to help out on that, but I can.
Which developer?
Excuse me?
Which developer do you have here?
It's James Kirby. It's the it's the master developer, as well as Tally Williams and Zach Crawford with P P F J.
If it's the same thing as number ten, it looks like more, I'm gonna say it, tilt wall. Yes. Not for you.
So I I can I can explain that one as well. So as you drive by there, you'll actually see the first building that's under construction right now, and that is a tilt wall building. That is that industrial flex space. That's what's in item nine as well as in ten.
Right, and that's that's in line with what this council approved when it made the amendment to the PIT, removing the, I believe it was corporate campus.
Corporate campus.
Campus.
Two, right?
Corporate campus.
Two vote?
Um, probably.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that was approved through the PUD amendments.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So the total assessment for the for the entire PIT is just over twenty-eight million dollars. That's that's split into two improvement areas. Improvement Area one is, if I go back here, it's you see that the the gray area, that's that's basically park open space. Everything to the north of that gray area is Improvement Area one. Everything to the south is Improvement Area two. We had to split it into multiple improvement areas because of the improvements that were benefiting each area. So the the area to the north was receiving benefit from one set of improvements. The area to the south, it was really just the the utilities, and so they have a they have a lower assessment. In terms of what's being funded, it's it's traditional infrastructure, so it's the streets, water, wastewater, drainage.
Could you go could you go back to the map one more time for me and and tell me, so Improvement Area two, which is paying a substantially lower share of the in the PIT, what what parcels does that entail?
So it's it's parcels ten and eleven.
Parcels ten and eleven, so that industrial flex predominantly, the tilt wall that's going up, that's going to have a an even lower cost of ownership when it comes to the PIT burden?
Right, it's it's state law. We have to allocate the assessments based on benefit, and there was just there were fewer improvements down there that were actually benefiting them. I mean, right now, those those buildings are already up, and a lot of the infrastructure to the north wasn't even in, so they were able to access with with roadways. It was basically some off-site utilities. Water and sewer was what was benefiting them.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
This is, so in terms of the the max four hundred and fifteen single-family units, one hundred and ninety.
One more point of clarification. Those single-family units, attached, detached, multifamily?
Those are single-family detached.
Single-family, I'm sorry.
Detached.
Detached. Okay, thank you. They're not condo homes, they're not condos, they're not apartments. There's the apartment down below.
Yeah, so there's there's nearly nine hundred units of apartment, almost two million square feet of the the industrial space, as well as some office and and mixed use and retail. And I realize this is a little difficult to to read. We've got the the sources of funds up at the top is probably the the most important part piece that you're probably wanting to focus on. Right now, there's no bonds, so the assessments are being levied. And currently, it's just set up as a reimbursement obligation, so that money would be paid to the developer, similar to your other PIT where it's it's the Martin tract, which is paid out over over thirty years. The intent, though, is to actually issue bonds, so that process is underway. And we'll be coming back here in the next month or two with the with the bond underwriter to to present those documents to you, so that the intent isn't to actually reimburse the developer. It's just this is getting the assessments levied, and then we'll replace that with the bonds. So again, Improvement Area one is about twenty-six point five million dollars. Improvement Area two is about one million six ninety-one. And then I had mentioned earlier that parcel eight was sold off.
How much was that to reimburse the developer?
Excuse me?
You said reimburse the developer. How much was that?
So the it's basically, if you look under the uses fund where it says public improvements, the the net project fund, it's twenty-five point three million, but of that, the developer's paying about one point five that was for that parcel eight that was being to the developer, so it'd be twenty-five point three minus one point five.
That's if the developer looked at his or her his obligations and that, correct? His requirements. You said that reimbursement for services being rendered, if those services were actually rendered, correct?
Is that for construction costs or?
Construction costs, that's right.
That's hard construction costs that are documented.
Right, so, well, not yet. When the when the when the bonds are sold, they're held by a trustee and in a project fund, so it's a segregated account held by the trustee. In order for the developer to access that, they have to submit, it'll probably be a thousand pages of invoices, cancel checks, lien releases. All that gets verified, and only then is the money released to the developer.
Only if they verify specifically that it lives up to their obligations regarding construction requirements, correct?
Well, that'll be the so our review is focused on did they actually pay for what was eligible improvements in the services? Did they did they actually build the roads, water, sewer that they said they were going to build? And then if there's any other provisions built into the bond documents to say you had to meet requirements in the development agreement or whatever else, then that'll be built into those documents.
So so I'm assuming, and maybe you can verify that, or staff can, you know, if there's a road built under this infrastructure development that the road's built to city specs, and we and city departments inspect the road, make sure it's six inches of concrete or whatever it's supposed to be, and then it passed the stress test, the brake test, whatever they call those, that the that everything, the water lines are installed and degrade and bright depth, and and so all of that has a city improvement project. And I guess there's a role of the of the city accepting those improvements, and once those improvements are accepted, then then the the trustee or the trust fund reviews that documentation, plus the receipts to say that the money was actually spent, maybe makes a phone call. Who knows how that process works, and then a check is written.
So the the first part of the question is that is nothing is different when a PIT is involved. It's just a financing vehicle. So whatever normal process the city goes through in terms of inspecting facilities, that's going to continue. In terms of can you make a a progress payment? If if the road's halfway built, and they said we've got, maybe there's eight payment requests from the contractor, they've only got the first two in. Some PIDs, they submit the first two payments, and you're paying them on a progress payment basis. Other ones, the cities say you have to actually be complete with the infrastructure, and then it's made on a reimbursement basis.
So the first the first payment may be we we ordered, you know, ten thousand linear feet of pipe, and it's sitting on property. We would like to get reimbursed for that. So that may be like, or does it have to be in in the ground, and it's a percentage of what's installed?
I think that that speaks to the point. There's the developer reimbursement, and then there's the the other costs that are paid, right? If someone's doing draws, I would imagine that it would not be the developer. It'd be the individual contractor who would be paid the funds as a draw.
Yet the person saying no is shaking his head in the background.
Yeah, no, so it's it's the the developer would be paying the contractors, and then when they, you know, so contractor.
So my understanding of the of the developer reimbursement is the developer's paid the money upfront and then gets reimbursed. But if the developer is paying it and getting reimbursed while it goes along, why wouldn't it just go straight to the PIT?
So the developer's not.
The developer would be the middle man in that scenario?
The developer's not paid upfront. The money's held with the trustee.
Right, right.
And so the and so the invoices have.
Developer would pay upfront for the improvements and be reimbursed at the end, right? But if the if you're talking about a draw scenario where you're being paid progress payments, why would the developer be in the middle of that and and the contractor?
Typically, it's it's a timing mechanism. The developer is able to pay within whatever the thirty-day requirement that the contractor's going to require. That's going to be really difficult. By the time they actually submit their paperwork, get their certificate of payment, that goes through the review process, gets approved. It has to go through, we review it, has to go to city staff, they have to sign it, has to get sent to the trustee, then the trustee actually getting that all done in thirty days can be can be difficult. So it's typical that the developer pays the invoices, and then they submit their cancel checks. Usually, it's on a monthly basis as as construction's commencing.
How is this different than the other twenty-six million dollars worth of improvements that have to be paid out of the PIT?
I'm not following the question.
So I I'm under the impression that particular portion we were talking about was only about one point six million dollars worth of the the project. Is the developer fronting all twenty-six million dollars worth of this and and getting paid out over time?
Yeah, so the developer would be paid, it'd be on a rolling basis. So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be saying, we're we're putting out twenty-six million dollars. After all twenty-six is in, we get reimbursed. It'd be on it'd be on a rolling basis. But the the portion that's allocated to that parcel eight, they would not be reimbursed for. That's just they have to pay that out because the state of Texas was not going to allow an assessment on their property.
Sorry, that helps me understand. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. So this is the assessment spread. This is what it's going to look like for every parcel with within the PIT. You can see the single-family lots. I guess the second to last column on the right, it shows annual installment. Depending on if you're lot type one or lot type two, you'll you'll range from seventeen hundred forty-six dollars a year to two thousand thirty-eight dollars a year. That's about a thirty-eight cent equivalent tax rate. You can see all of Improvement Area one is a thirty-eight cent equivalent tax rate, and it has broken out based on the uses. Improvement Area two is is just below ten cents. And and again, that was just because they had. Um and and again, that was just because they had fewer uh improvements that were benefiting. Every one of the parcels that are that are listed here. Uh every one of the owners, cause it wasn't just one developer, you had. You had a whole lot.
What's the term of the pit?
Uh thirty years.
All right, and can you help me understand because the pit equivalent tax rate is what, you know, I'm I'm really interested in, that's what speaks to affordability. Uh more than anything. And I am curious, the pit equivalent tax rate that you have on this table, is that based at. Uh projected year one valuation or is that an an aggregate uh average valuation over the thirty years?
It's it's based on the estimated build out value a- as it exists, right? It's a kind of year one value.
So that's year one value. So in theory, in year ten, this thing is uh my my house is doubled in value. Now my equivalent tax rate is. Uh is nineteen cents instead of thirty eight cents?
That's correct.
And that's the, that's an appropriate understanding?
Yes.
Thank you.
And on the on the commerce side, if we go into recession and home values go down, now your.
But that's.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
Build something good.
And I believe that is my last slide, so I'm happy to go over anything or answer any other questions.
Any other questions come? Is there anybody in the public wishing to make public comment?
Move to close the public hearing?
Motion and second to close the public hearing, Mayor Mayor Pro Tim Weiss.
Yes.
Mister Ruiz.
Yes.
Uh Ms. Holliday. Mayor votes yes. Mister Mateer.
Yes.
Mister McDonald.
Yes.
Mister Rogers.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve item seven A, Mister Rogers.
Yes.
Mister McDonald.
Yes.
Mister Mateer.
No.
Uh mayor votes yes. Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mister Ruiz.
Yes.
And Mister Weiss.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. All right. Okay, whoa, okay. All right, so going to the pulled items, please, if you'll read the captions.
We will start with item five A, approving an ordinance on first and third reading with a caption reading in ordinance of the city of Plugerville, Texas, adopting the second amendment to the FY twenty four budget for the city of Plugerville and providing.
Okay, five A, who pulled that? David?
Mister Rogers.
David?
Oh.
Curious which if you had specific questions or do you want us to go through it?
Uh no, I've got some, I've got uh uh specific questions. Um. On under uh I'm I'm going to exhibit A on the budget the budget amendment. Um. Uh I noticed that we're adding uh a a additional full-time position in people and culture. Then we're paying for it essentially with the uh savings from uh not having somebody in communications. Can you tell me what? What's up with that? Why do we need that extra uh FTE and and PNC?
What's up with that?
Sure. Um James, I might have you, it's it's your department, I may have you talk about it. I will tell you, and I don't know if Robbie's here. Um and we do compare, of course, other cities of size and I'll I'll be frank and I'm sorry to steal your thunder, Robbie. We um we really pride ourselves on what's happening in people plus culture, but also in people plus culture is items like risk. There there's other items other than what you may consider some normal HR functions. Um the demand that I think my team places on P plus C is um higher than most. And we pride that by showing it our retention and our recruitment efforts as well. Um but Robbie, I want you to talk specifically about that position.
We added a person in October. Originally, last year when we developed the budget, we took a request for two positions to the personnel review board. It was ultimately decided that let's hire one person and see if that lightens the load enough to make it through the fiscal year. Or if we might need to reconsider getting another one. Um and that that's where we are today. As Serena mentioned, our programs are extensive. Um thankfully, our turnover rate for FY twenty four, our voluntary turn turnover rate is currently seven percent. Um but we attribute that to all of the things the committees are doing. Um the effort and the events that we do, our compensation and benefits analysis. So just the day to day, our HR work is. Is consuming enough now that we've grown to almost four hundred and fifty full-time FTEs. But really, it's all of the extra stuff that a small number of my staff are handling. Um the event planning, the recruiting. Um that really leads us to need another set of hands on deck and a generalist. Um we've also partnered closer with police and. We're working very closely with professional standards and involved in a lot of issues there. So I think having another generalist on the staff would really be beneficial.
And uh you've mentioned that seven percent was the voluntary turnover rate of the last the last full year or the last fiscal year?
That is fiscal year. Um in twenty twenty three fiscal year, our turnover rate voluntary was ten percent, overall seventeen percent.
And what 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 was it the year before that?
I do not have that with me, but I think we're probably in the twenties. Yeah.
Twenties total or twenties voluntary?
That I don't have, but we could get that for you.
Okay. Now, seven percent is a low number. Um and and why is it that we that we have that savings in communications? Are we understaffed there? Do we project for more uh FTEs in communications than we really need? I mean, it's from what I can tell, the communications department is doing excellent work as they are.
Webmaster, we had, yeah, we just had two positions that were vacant for approximately four months and now both of those positions are filled. So that's where this the salary savings.
So it's not a not a full year empty, it's just a there was just savings because there was a temporary.
Correct.
Gap in those positions. So we'll need to fund all of that in next years. Uh. Okay. Um the next question I have on the uh on exhibit A is um. The uh um the police uh holiday pay was unbudgeted? What's the what's the story with that? Why was that not budgeted for?
Sure, I there were some misses, I'll be real frank, last year on that. So the way we budget for the rest of the employees for holiday pay is different than the way that we budget. For uh police officers. So it was a miss and we're correcting it.
Okay, all right. Um engineering, there's a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars uh salary savings available. I'm assuming we're short one FTE in engineering, is that right?
So I'm gonna go off Robbie's notes. There there's been nine nine vacancies in that department.
Nine?
In the department, um that is not the same as PE's. We may have relayed um not accurate information in the meeting before. You have project managers, et cetera. Out of those, the PE's i- is not that number. I just wanna make sure we're not confusing the word engineer with the engineering department.
So we've got we've got a a lot of positions in engineering that are going vacant. Is that what I'm hearing?
In that department, yes. They're currently aggressively trying to fill those positions right now.
Okay, why do we have all those empty slots in engineering?
That has been a conversation.
So all seven percent is in the department?
And I will say, that's nine vacancies during fiscal year twenty four. It doesn't mean they currently have nine vacancies. The salary savings came. As from this fiscal year.
From a month, eh, cause cause a hundred and twenty seven thousand, so that's nine people for a month and a half each, maybe.
If that.
Alright, so we do do we currently have a bunch of vacancies in there?
My understanding that we have two. My understanding is two current vacancies, not. Doesn't give us major heartburn.
And uh Parks and Rec, same question?
Yes.
So we they've got a hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary savings available on Parks and Rec. Is that because we had. Unanticipated vacancies for part of the year and they've now been filled?
Correct. The bulk of that was from the assistant director position that was vacant for four months and a parks operation supervisor position. Which we filled right away. That was a new one to the budget. Um unfortunately, that person is not with us anymore and it's been vacant. Um they've had more vacancies, about nineteen over the course of FY twenty four, several of those being parks, operations tech. Um and so that's where the but the bulk comes from those two higher.
But Shane's got a number two now in place?
Yes.
Okay, alright, good. Alright, I think that's it.
Message approved.
Second. Motion and a second to approve five A. Mister Mateer.
Yes.
Mister McDonald.
Yes.
Mister Rogers.
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mister Ruiz.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Weiss.
Yes.
Merritt motion carried. Item five F, is that correct?
Five F is approving the purchase and installation of a new playground for Verona Park in the amount of one hundred forty nine thousand seven hundred and one dollars and eighty two cents and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Doug?
Yes, I I pulled this one. This one uh struck me as odd. It seems like we've got a. Uh I know we're we're very well committed to our uh park uh and playground replacement program, trying to bring down the average age of our. Uh of our playgrounds. We do a great job of that. Uh certainly appreciate that. Uh this one struck me because I believe this playground is six years old, five or six years old. Uh and it it seems like this is more a dispute between the the neighborhood and their developer for not putting in sufficient. Playgrounds. Um I'm feeling. Uh like this is not necessary a fair and equitable expenditure of our uh hundred and fifty thousand dollars to. Uh replace a six-year-old playground in an HOA-maintained park when they. Uh it there there are other playgrounds that are much older, that are are more dilapidated, that I think would would benefit from this. Um I'm also a little concerned that we're using Parkland escrow funds from Vine Creek. Uh you know, a depart- uh this is a neighborhood park, not a regional park. I I'm under the impression that. Parkland escrow funds should be used for regional improvements. Um so I just have a a lot of concerns and I'm. Not sure that there's a whole lot of justification here.
Shane, you got a comment?
Mateer kids tore it up.
Would would you prefer I mean, you make the presentation or try to take those point by point?
Just answer the question.
Okay, as far as the Parkland dedication uses itself, it um. We have a resource, a hundred and eight-page document from Texas Ag Life that gives us standards and. We're basically allowed to use Parkland dedication dollars in a regional park and a park that was built by that development or an adjacent development. And so it is, it does qualify for use of that. It is eight years old. It is not a playground.
Six years old.
Twenty eighteen to.
Six years old.
Yeah, that my.
Our average playground, yeah, our average playscape right now is just under sixteen years old or or is that following this year's?
When when I started, we were about thirteen, the average age was about thirteen. Um we've lowered that to about seven this year.
Geez.
And we could be at five at the end of the year. A couple of the playgrounds y'all have already approved, the average age of our playgrounds in our park system. We've been very aggressively working off. I had fourteen playgrounds that were fifteen years of age or older when I got here five years ago. And fifteen years is the replacement age. So I had plenty of my. Infrastructure past and so um we're we're working very aggressively using Parkland escrow funds and the capital outlay dollars. And bond funds to 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 replace our aging aging infrastructure for sure. This one particularly, um. The developer's agreement was initially um approved in two thousand and seven. Um for, I guess, a couple of reasons, the development didn't move on. There was uh. Concerns about rezoning and exation, roadway infrastructure that held up the process. A new DA was amended in twenty fifteen that was ultimately. Approved through the subdivision process. Um the new subdivision was rezoned and it was approved by. Planning zoning and council in twenty sixteen. The DA from two thousand and seven. Only required a playground and a picnic pavilion. It didn't talk about size or play value and that is why you see the playground you see today.
So and and that's a an agreement between the the developer enters in specifically to support the neighborhood, this also being an HOA park. Or excuse me, an HOA-maintained.
Yeah.
Park. Um what 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 responsibility does the HOA uh uh have in maintaining the. The the infrastructure and improving the the infrastructure?
So as we've continued to grow and growth paying for growth, we've seen the average amount of population within a ten-minute walk to a park from seventy eight when I first got here to where. Eighty-four now. So we're continuing to lean in the developers and make sure developers are paying for parks in their new area. So. We're continuing to see that number raise. Um the city owns that land. We work with the HOA where they maintain it. We. We obviously will replace any playgrounds if there was issues and we do the mulch, but they do all the maintenance around that playground. So it's a city-owned park. And it's a city-owned play structure. It was deeded over at the time.
Always, it was given to the city by the developer. And I think there are other parks in the city where. Um the HOA, eh if they're not satisfied with the level of service or the level of infrastructure that the the city provides, the HOA will. Install the facilities and deed it over to the.
Yes, sir. And we have maintenance agreements with a lot of the HOAs, especially with pocket parks, where they would like to see that park maintained, maybe at a little higher standard than our current mowing. And we enter agreements with them. Highland Park, Falcon Point, for example, are a couple that I think of straight off the top of my head.
Highland Park Park.
Yeah, yeah, all the parks out there. But this this playground. This playground was installed um by a a a vendor that we no longer use as our standards. It's much smaller and the HOA came to us with. Thirty thousand dollars in hand and they initially just wanted to buy a new playground. But the playgrounds they were looking at wouldn't hit our standard either. Thirty thousand dollars doesn't. Um stretch a long way in the playground um industry. And so I I met with them and their leadership and I said, you know, maybe we can use some Parkland escrow funds from that area. Plus the thirty thousand dollar investment you have, and let's get that up to the same standard that we would have with. Almost all of our other pocket parks, which is about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar play value, which is what we've been installing in the last three and a half, four years. So this does get us up to what other neighborhoods would have. Part of the Parkland dedication process is to ensure that. No matter the median income of that neighborhood, you would still potentially as a family have the same play value as your neighbors. Um I do think Verona is lacking. I think it was part of a developer's agreement from two thousand and seven that got ratified in twenty sixteen and that never really got changed and. Um and the HOA themselves, those residents think that it's lacking compared to Vine Creek and their other neighborhoods that are starting to build out. And so. The idea was to work with them, partner with their thirty thousand and see if we could get to a playground that could. That could be what they would find value in their community equal to what other folks around them have.
And and that park in in Vine Creek that you referenced, uh you know, from an equitable standpoint, that was that was installed and paid for by the developer?
It was fully installed and paid for by the developer. And I think if Verona hadn't gone through the timeline it did, you would probably have seen a different playground. There because.
It would in the center. It sounds like to me what you're saying is that it would, the standard that we had in two thousand and seven.
Sure.
Skate by is not the standard that we have.
Yeah, and once.
It sounds like the developer cheaped out.
The developers cheap out?
And the, you know, they but that's the that's the park that was built in that neighborhood and.
It was built to the DA.
Homes in that neighborhood knowing that was the park.
That's absolutely correct. It was built to the DA at the time, but it is not a playground that were uh that were. That were up to our standards for the other playgrounds in the area.
Yeah, and I I pulled the item because it feels like we're, you know, paying for a a developer's uh. Uh we're subsidizing a developer in this.
If the Parkland escrow issue is the problem, I guess we could come back with a fund balance request or even a future general fund. Um request. This is development paying for growth in the park zone that it could be allocated for, so.
Well.
And they have a full build out over in Vine Creek.
So if that developer comes back, we can ping him then, right?
Uh I think this, you know, this developer might have been uh in front of us just a few minutes ago.
Uh oh.
He was John Lloyd.
I I believe he's a partner in Lakeside Meadow.
Oh, okay.
He's a silent partner, but he's a partner.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Is there any other questions?
Is it? Never mind. I better shut my mouth. Okay. Thank you, Shane.
Yes, sir.
Need a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve five F. Mayor Pro Tim Weiss.
Nope.
Mister Ruiz.
Yes.
Ms. Holliday.
Yes.
Mayor votes no. Mister Mateer.
Yes.
Mister McDonald.